Everybody. I call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance. After a couple of preliminary approvals here, we're going to modify the agenda briefly and then you'll understand why in a second.
Alright, so. I'd like to ask for the consent motion for modified agenda. Personnel section. The agenda of my new eight point one three. It's the appointment, this is the appointment of our district clerk. I'd like to ask that to be moved forward to section one point zero three. We can point and conduct me with the thought that's for a district clerk. So motion for consent.
We approve the amended agenda.
Proven amended agenda, yes, sir.
Just so everybody knows, on the agenda here, it says March tenth, but it is March twenty fourth, so. Alright. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So move. Yes. Alright. So we're gonna.
Mean the.
You would, Kevin, if you would. Make a motion to.
You want, you want.
Make a motion to approve eight point one three or one, yep.
Inside motion through through eight. Eight point one three. Appointment of our district clerk.
Sir. So just as a. For everybody who's here. On the recommendation of the interim superintendent, Dr. Hunter, recruit Morgan Carson to the position of superintendent secretary district clerk. As a start date of March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Motion made in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, good. Morgan, if you would like to step forward, Dr. Hunter, Sally Tell, if you'd like to make.
So I'd like to make a couple of quick comments and then we're gonna do an oath of office to follow up. So that the appointment is consistent with New York state policy and New York state regulations. It's a real. Advantage to have someone with the knowledge background and commit. That Morgan will bring to this office. There's lots of knowledgeable people out there. She's got knowledge in areas that exceed the typical. Type of clerk, her political background, her organizational skills, her ability to work with a variety of members in the community. Make her a person who will bring to us, someone who will add. To the quality of what Geneseo it's all about. I'm excited for the short time that I'm gonna have the opportunity to work with Morgan. But I'm more excited for Geneseo and the opportunities they're gonna have with her over the next few years.
I would echo everything Dr. Hunter said, knowing Morgan is a student and an adult. And I think she brings a wealth of talent, passion and commitment to the district. She's always displayed that and and I know. That she would do a remarkable job in every aspect of her position, so well.
Yeah, and I'll just add that along with Dr. Hunter and Mr. Stalachella, I'm honored to recommend. That the V O E has approved, Board of Education has approved. Morgan Carson is executive secretary to the superintendent and district clerk. This district role really requires some extensive leadership and organizational skills. That Morgan clearly has. As well as a lot of expertise in law, the legal environment, confidentiality as of this role. Community relations technology, I could go on and on, but I won't embarrass you too much. Morgan brings these and other. And many other qualities to this role as our key district. Point of contact, so. With that, Morgan, if you would step forward. So if you would repeat after me, please. Hi, Morgan Carson.
Hi, Morgan Carson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of district clerk to the Board of Education. Of the Geneseo Central School District. But you do need to sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll be there, sorry.
Yeah. I wasn't playing any reading, competing that part. Just one more. I'll sign and John.
And then John, you're gonna have to sign it. Thank you.
And I just wanna thank everyone here today that came to support me and especially Dr. Hunter, Mr. Cialio, Mr. Salta. And the rest of the GCS hiring committee that took their time to speak with me, interview me a couple of times and entrust me in this entire process. I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity and can't wait to see what the future holds. Go Dose.
Welcome, Morgan.
You, you wanna take a few seconds, let's adjourn away, Morgan, you can say hi to each of the. Board members?
Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
Right. You can. If he doesn't.
He needs.
He needs. That's not good.
Okay. I thought you would have known that.
W is coming issues, Dr. Hunter, this is Dana.
Sorry. Yeah.
Mr. Phil, I'm.
Yeah. Right, I remember it.
My brother is at the hospital. Dana. Nice to meet you, thank you.
This is my husband Dana. Me too.
Hi.
Hi.
Meet you. Hi.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you all. Nice to see you. Thank you.
You'll make sure you get.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah. We're still, so we're actually still in session.
Okay. So now we just move on to. Alright, so I'd like to ask for consent motion on one point zero four. Final recommendation, the interim superintendent should prove the minutes of the regular March seventh, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting.
Sir.
Motion made in second, any questions on the minutes from March tenth? It's all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So move. Do we have most anybody? Alright. With that, we are going to go to capital improvement project presentation.
So I'd like to thank our capital improvement team from campus, Gary Huffman and Mike Ferrari. And our capital improvement team architects, Ted Mountain, who is here today. To give us an update on where we are with schematic designs. This is something that's absolutely critical important for the board and any community members at home to be tuned into. We have made a commitment and an investment to continuing to grow our facilities. And our designs are developing and we wanna make sure our board understands the extent of the development of these designs. We wanna make sure the board understands the costs associated with it. And that's where campus and S E I can show us their their insights into the ongoing work.
Hi, I'm just gonna introduce Mike Ferrari. Mike is a senior project manager with campus. He works with me on the Geneseo project. You're familiar with me. Mike is a new face to the team.
For everybody else, you are Gary Huffman.
Yes, it's still there. And so Mike is gonna present, we put together a package this evening, so it's going to reflect. And this goes back to a conversation we had a long time ago, is that when we're developing the documents and Ted Mountain is here from S E I as well. We really identify the development of the project. Documents as a schematic design, that's an initial high level. Development of the project, which with time gets refined to a design development level, which is in picture as an airplane flying in the sky. At fifty thousand foot, your schematic design, you're looking down at the ground, you see things, it's 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 you can conceptually see what's happening, but there's not a lot of detail. You bring it down to the D D level, design development, airplane is now about twenty thousand foot, you really can start to see definition. And then we get to the final stage at the construction documents, which go to S E D for their approval, they'll issue the billing permit once they approve the documents. And that's when the airplane's hitting the ground and you can really see everything in fine detail. Where we are this evening is we're at the schematic design levels, we're up here. Still. Conceptual to to some degree, but also some definition as well, right? So we, in order to monitor the budget. Do estimates at each of those levels. So right now, this evening, Mike's gonna talk about the schematic design. Estimate and it's gonna, and we're gonna show you where we are in that. And then in time, as S E I develops their D D documents, there'll be another estimate, we'll come back to the board and report on that. And then then when the documents go to S E D in June, then we will come back again with a more refined and that'll be the construction documents. As I say, that's eventually what will go to the contractors for bid, but we have to go through the S E D. Process, though, they're taking six to eight months right now for review. So we are planning on a, on it to come out of the state around February next year, which then it goes right into. Bid and award phase and construction next year. I will step away a minute, I'll let Mike take it from here. And you're in good hands as he reports how we are on schematic design. Thanks, Gary.
Hi, everybody. So a lot of what Gary was just referring to, I have illustrated on our, on the first slide on the screen here, what our pre-construction process is. I wanna start here because it'll give us some context on the next couple of slides. You can see, like Gary said, we are, we are at the end of schematic design, we're talking about our schematic design report and estimate. In reality, the architects are are into design development phase already, you know, in the essence of time is a very short schedule. We've gotta keep moving. So the comments and feedback that we've received so far and that we continue to receive back is constantly flowing back. Through the architects into the design documents from this point forward. At the end of every phase. We. We follow back up with the user group. So during schematic design, we had a series of meetings with stakeholders in all the areas of building that are gonna be touched in this project. We, it's a information collecting phase, so our. Our task for them was to tell us, give us all of your wish list items, tell us how does, how can your space work better for you, basically? At this phase, we, and this will become more apparent on the next slide, at this phase, we're just collecting tons of information and we expect that. Everything that we are hearing is not going to be able to make it into the project. We do have to honor the budget, we can't go over what we're. So what we do is we try to incorporate what we can into the documents and where we are right now, thank you, is. Trying, is wrapping our heads around that with the dollars associated to it and starting to identify where can we start value engineering this thing? How do we start refining this down to get more closer to our budget? So some of the reasons in schematic design that you see larger budget is that the conceptual ideas sometimes are, and a lot of times are based on a square footage. There's no details at the concept level. We use historical data to apply square footage costs to to some areas. If there's, if there's prices we can, hard prices, I should say, we can get, we try to get those as soon as possible as well. But at this point, we are taking the concepts and putting them onto paper, the architects are doing that. And those tend to, the ideas tend to grow and the idea is it grows so we can see the bigger picture, so we know where we, how we can refine it down to get to our end goal. We're also incorporating, as I just said, the user feedback, so this is still, we're still pumping more information into the project. Existing condition surveys, we're doing deeper dives into areas that are gonna be affected in the building. The architects are doing their building foot analysis and we are at this phase. Incorporating this because we want to over design for reason, for for later on in the project. So as we get down into design development phase, which will be our next report, we're gonna include all of the feedback we get from this one. Refine the design even more and we're gonna start to. Include or identify alternates to the scope. This is where we start to identify protection for big day. We will. We will identify portions of the work, assign priorities to them, and those become our add alternates. This will, the the idea behind this is to get us actually below budget, heading down into S E D and towards bidding. The idea is if numbers come in on big day higher than expected. We're protected. We are at least we're at budget. If they come in at our estimate or lower. Great, we can, we can turn to our list of alternates and start pulling things back into the project. But including them this early, which which leads to higher costs is is done for one very important reason, and that's so. S E D has the information to review. We want them to review this now or when we submit it to S E D. If we have to go back to them later to add something that have not seen before. We could be entering this same six to eight month queue, maybe different, but it's it's another review process that would kill our schedule. So, so we try to identify as much as possible. And go to the next one. Okay, so we are currently reporting that the project is. A little more than one point two million dollars over the conceptual budget. On the screen here, you're looking at our conceptual estimate, what our current schematic estimate is. And the variance between the two. An orange number means we're over, a white number means we're under, we're at budget. So if we, if we go down these and the next couple of slides are gonna add some explanations to these. We're seeing overages right now in the gym, but some savings in the locker rooms that are across the hallway from the gym. Between those two, we're looking at a smaller variance of just under fifty thousand dollars. The corridor improvements were, we're including the tunnel, moisture mitigation that's happening down there. That came in a little bit under budget because the scope of work was a little less intense than we were originally thinking, but the. Access hallways around the. The back of the auditorium that go by the fitness center, those had some more finishes in them, had some more upgrades to them than originally it thought they were gonna be in contact. The existing locker rooms, these are the ones over closer to the fitness center, I believe it's where they're located, right? This grew significantly and I'll explain in a minute. We had estimated, this is one of those square foot costs where the locker rooms are gonna be renovated. We applied some historical numbers to a locker room renovation, which would have included, you know, new lockers, new finishes, maybe new fixtures. New lights, things like that, kind of a refresh of the space. The the schematic drawings are showing a full gut renovation with a complete new layout in those docks. Well, and and I'll get back to that on the next slide. The auditorium renovations. Those actually, we saw some savings from concept for about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars under budget, that would be in the in the auditorium proper. So we're doing ADA improvements essentially and and some work on the stage. The work on the stage is on the last line. And that it has to do with acoustic shell. Right now you do have a structure behind the the stage that is. Built to kinda help reflect sound and and to the back of the room. This would be, this acoustic shell is a portable, foldable, storable solution for that, that would help enhance that. The reason why this number creeped up a little bit is. We, there's different tiers, there's different prices for everything, and I think we priced one of the more expensive options to be on the conservative side at this point. Excellent. The entry lobby and secure entrance. We had some scope creep in there as well. The vestibule got a little bit bigger for security purposes, I'll get into that on the next slide. And. Just a more added scope of of finishes and a little bit extra area. The the one thing that's that is adding a lot of value to that overage. Is replacement of all of the exterior storefront windows and doors. The ones that are existing there are. I was looking at them, I'm moving in here, they look like they're in decent shape, but that's one thing we're gonna look at trying to salvage to bring that number way down. The art music U P K area. We did see some increases there. A lot of this fifty four thousand dollars you're seeing in the variance is tied to. As a replacement, again, of exterior doors and windows. Now. The, there, there is some opportunity for us to take another look at that and scale that back as well and be a little less invasive and just target. Specific windows that we might need to to touch for egress purposes. And then B C S items. We, this is on here kind of for conversation purposes, the. The value that we're dealing with, we have an allowance for five hundred and thirty six thousand dollars and change. To address items that have been noted on your B C S report. It's been recently discussed to. To pause and revisit that list because priorities might have shifted recently. So we're gonna sit down with the O A C of team and Mr. Hunter and the district and. Capture anything that we don't know about or that priority might have changed and then we're gonna revisit this number and and see what we can fit into it. Depending on what happens with some of these other numbers as we go through the next couple of phases. We might be able to. Have more room in that number as well, but we'll see. Okay. So we did meet this morning with our design team and the districts and Mr. Tenello, thank you for joining us. And he shared with us some of his immediate concerns after looking at the report. So we'll just go on through some of his questions and after we go through these, I'll open up to you guys if you have any further questions. So. You've studied this gym for a while now. The question is, why are we so far over budget? Our explanation in the report was there was additional steel structure that needed to be added to the building. And while you guys have studied the the block walls and the steel frame structure and we know what, why we're doing this project to address that. What was not included at concept level was removal, but removing of the mezzanine level that's in the gym. This was, was this user input to remove or? From the beginning?
No, I think we had the idea of removing the mezzanine from the beginning to provide more gym space for you guys. But it was not understood at the concept level that the mezzanine is actually providing. Lateral structural support for the walls next to it, so we can't just go in there and cut it out. So what Mike's talking about is we we cut that mezzanine out, we provide the additional gym station. But at the same time, we have to provide some additional steel reinforcing to the sidewalls. In order to make that work. And so that's part of, you know, the the overage on the on the large gym.
Yep. There was also some additional structural details that we didn't take into account at concept level. The new walls where they are going back and the interior of the building requires some modifications to existing structural footers that are under the concrete slab. We've gotta actually go down, find them, enlarge them, so we have the bearing capacity for the new walls that we need to put up. There's on the additional steel and the footer, so the, those were the big texture items. I believe there was also a third. Divider screen added during the schematic design process where we think we captured two of them at concept. So that altogether has kind of made that number go up. How, how can this be addressed? We're gonna, S E I is gonna start exploring alternative structural details to to address this. We do need to brace the building from racking back and forth. So we're gonna go back to the table and and see what we can do to make that less impactful with the existing or added structure we need to 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 put in there. And then equipment and finishes, those could become expensive really quickly, so we're gonna be vigilant on what we're selecting. You know, anything needs, everything needs to be durable, it needs to look good, you know, it needs to look like we did this right, but we're gonna be very smart about it and balance that with the budget as well. Going forward. Music art U P K. What, the the increase in footprint, this, the the price went up because during design, we. Had some requests from the end users that the spaces were tight. And we started looking at the area of that building, there was a conference room next nearby. So the the discussion quickly went to, well, can we take that space? And we started to explore that. So the, the footprint that we're talking about grew in size, so immediately that's pumping the price up from our concept. We added a relocation of the kilns to the art room from its existing spot. And the big driver of the increase there was the windows and door replacement shown on the schematic designs for the exterior of the building. There were for some reasons for that. Rooms of a certain size do have different requirements for exiting. When you get to certain thresholds, you're required to have two exits, a door and a rescue window. When you reach another threshold, you know, a rescue window no longer becomes viable and you get a door. That was one of the driving factors for adding some doors into those classrooms. Also, the age of the existing windows was taken into consideration. They're existing, they're original to the building. And if we need to bring this space up to the current code, it would not meet, it would not meet current energy code.
Can we go back to the increase on that, that section?
Yes, go back. One.
Okay, thank you.
So how, how are we gonna adjust this? We're, we're, we're gonna shrink this footprint back down to what we're originally looking at a concept. And start thinking outside the box a little bit to see how we can make this work within that footprint. Second, we're going to, the S E I is gonna take a look at the exterior wall again and see where. We absolutely need to replace a window or add a door if necessary. Otherwise, we're gonna try and keep that the same. A full replacement as shown in the schematic drawings required structural steel to shore up the masonry openings. Putting new opening, you know, glass and doors in there, so we can avoid that, that'll bring the cost way down.
So Mike, I wanna, I wanna be clear, so anybody in the audience and or anybody listening in the community. We had discussed in regards to this music art and U D K area, a plan A and a plan B. So that we can continue to value engineer some of the recommendations made by that art and music committee. And see if in fact we can get square footage to the point where windows and doors are appropriate. But also they can get some of the size increases and 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 see how far that goes. So that that can be a plan A in evolution, plan B. Is if when we get to the bitter end and it just doesn't go, we'll need to make sure everybody's aware that. We gave it our best shot, but the dollars don't align with the structures. We wanna keep driving that A and B.
Correct, yeah, so we did discuss that earlier today and we're gonna come up with a, with two different options. One this way, one scaled back, so we do have that ball back.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the, what drove this whole section was the intent to incorporate U P K. Into the district. And it makes good conceptual sense. But now that we begin to see some of the ramifications from a construction standpoint, the cost is getting pretty significant.
Well, so, so I, I guess, I I have other questions to go back, but while we're on this particular. Art, is the size increase to the U P K rooms or the the art and music rooms?
Yes, we distributed it. So the the space that we took over, picture those three other spaces kind of shifting over and absorbing that space.
But so like during the initial design, like we went over the the acquired square footage to code. What code did those require? Do do those meet the square footage requirement to include another exit door?
If I'm hearing you correctly, you're asking, are we at that threshold to require that?
No, I'm saying from the original, like you were talking about the addition of needing like. Rescue windows or if the space is too big, then it can't have a rescue window, it has to have a door. The required space for a U P K. The required space for a U P K classroom is. Like we had already gone over this, like the required square footage.
Yes, yeah.
Does that square footage automatically require an exit dinner?
We, there's a question. The block, I don't have it up here, but we had four rooms in a row.
Yep.
And it was down in the hallway, um, uh, down from the district office. So that, if you remember that block of space, um, it has four rooms now and then there's a conference room at the end. So what we did is when we explored the option of taking that conference area, office area. We grew the pre K rooms which were at the other end minimally. And most of the space went into the music and art rooms because that was the discussion of what space needed the most square footage. Because of the number of kids in there. Um, and so what happened is the two three K rooms did not grow to require. A door, it still needed a rescue window, any size classroom over five hundred needs a rescue window. Um, so the music and art needed a door out of it when we absorbed that other space. And part of the cost is in that door, but we've already started to look at ways to bring that back down. Um, so that's what we're doing right now, we're trying to bring that area back down, I personally think it takes, makes a lot of sense to take that space. Because of the number of students in the art and the music rooms. But if we can't get it back down, we're going to have to make a decision about whether that cost is worth it or not in the end. That answers your question.
Yes, yeah, that, that answered my specific question, thank you, that it was not related to the U P K.
Right, I think the pre K rooms were originally sized around nine. And we're trying to keep them under a thousand because that's the tipping point, is a thousand square feet is going to require the door. So we're trying to massage it right now between nine and a thousand, but if it grew, it grew minimally. Um, it was mostly the art and music that grew and they, they gained some space by grabbing that end. Which that end was really, if you remember the original existing plan, it's, it's about half a classroom. So essentially we took half a classroom and we distributed among amongst art and music to give them a little more space. Programmatically, it makes a lot of sense, it's part of the, I think, advantage of doing. All these phases of design because you get these ideas that come in and it's just a matter of now can we afford it? I think it's the best design, but it wasn't originally conceived that way.
Alright, um, the locker room renovations, so those were originally, like I touched on a little earlier. Estimated as a renovation of your existing room, um, updating finishes and lockers and such. Uh, for, for privacy reasons, uh, I think mostly there's, there was a request to. Move those offices and storage that are in board inside that locker room out, so they have access out the hallway. The reason being if there's, if there's a male coach. That has to get into an office that happens to be in girls' team room, he can't access his office, so. Um, S E I did a, a study on what that would look like and, and the schematic design documents, um. And that's what we have priced up, that's why we're seeing a, a blow up of that number, so this is another. Space where we talked about doing a plan B, our second option, where those offices stay where they are. The space generally stays like it is and we do like we had estimated at conceptual level, a refresh of that space with. Think minimally like new lockers, new team style lockers. Uh, I just described how we can address that, uh, so we're, we're going to look at a plan B to keep the plan similar to what it is. And the auditorium overall decreased, but um, the acoustic shell increased a lot. And I touched on that before, we, we priced conservatively more expensive model of this, um. There's definitely room to pull that back and I think the latest pricing is more fifty to sixty thousand dollar range, not the one hundred and twenty five thousand dollar range. So we're, we are identifying those products now to try and rein that place back.
Again, I, I just want to again make clear for those that are here and those that may be listening, um, this is not going to just be a dollars and cents. And or architectural decision, we're going to get back to our user groups and we're going to share with them some of the other schools in the region. That are using different models of this shelf so that our music and theater group can look at some existing. Um, facilities and what those alternative shelves look like. Uh, versus what maybe the school of the arts might have in the Cadillac version. So that they're getting a look see and making sure that we're moving in the right direction.
I, I, I guess I just, I have a problem with the. When you're developing. A concept and applying dollars and cents, when we have to make a decision and go to the public and ask money. For him, why wouldn't you have used the Cadillac numbers first?
Uh, well, that's a, that is a good question, um. I don't have a in-depth answer other than we have a little bit more information now is what was being looked or, looked at. Which is what we had priced and, and this is the point at which we then take a look at a number and say, whoa, hang on this. That can't fly, let's find something cheaper and now we're working our way back into that number that fits. So we want to, we, we're always trying to push the envelope to see what we can do and from there. We, we see where we're at and we got to then scale it back and that's part of the process from getting the, from the schematic down to the construction document level.
And I believe that happened during the planning phases when the conceptual budgets were being built up, if you recall, we were. Significantly higher than where we landed with this project, there was massaging being done to. Bring the number down to something that could be um, promoted to the public in a reasonable amount, but we were, we were. I don't know, I think we're several million over at some point and it's like, well, let's get the number down, so there's, it's like pushing on a balloon and you're trying to. Make it work within what you have to work with, right, so we could have, but it then referendum would have been significantly higher too. So it just, it just, it just all, it kind of just bakes into it all.
But, but that's the point, Gary.
Yeah.
That's the point is, is we have to go to the public to ask for what we need. And if we didn't have the correct information, then we didn't ask the public for what we needed.
I don't think you did, I think you had the correct information.
Clearly we don't, clearly we don't.
So Matt, I think at this stage, we have, is early in the design, still room to make some. Adjustments within the design itself and stay within the, within the financial level. The discussion we had earlier today was there are different levels of this acoustic. Unit and I think we're at the good, the better category as opposed to Broadway level category, so. That is a distinction, so earlier today was about a hundred and fifty eight thousand, today it's, tonight it's fifty thousand ish. Okay, we're getting down, but still, still meeting the functional requirements of this.
But back to the, the gym, okay, which was the main driver of this whole project. We had ad nauseam meetings with your group. We specifically talked about structural steel. I'm confused as to why it wasn't known before now. That we needed additional structural steel and that you were going to need additional footing, like how did you not know that then?
Well, Matt, you're right, because ultimately what we do is we work with the information we're given and. Well, I'll just close your own with that.
Well, I guess for the answer on the structural steel, I would say that. We did a lot of investigation into the gym, but did we, did we do, you know. Ad nauseam field investigation in the locker room area and understand all the calculations required. To pull that mezzanine out, probably partially. But um, it does take the design process to go through and have a structural engineer and analyze everything, understand the final. Um, design and they're looking right now at how we can pull that structural number back. If there's other ways to brace that gym, it'll be less expensive. So that's what we're going to do, we're going to try to get it back in the right budget number. But we can't, we're not, we're never going to know everything at, at the concept phase. We'll know as much as we can.
But there, but.
But without going through the design process, you're always going to discover things.
I, I understand that, right, and, and, and there's built in variances, what, what was the percentage? Twenty five percent that you built in is a, is a variance, um, but. You knew what you encountered with the small gym base and so you had to add additional footing for that, yes? And you saw that the building moved when we moved part of. Building, so I, I just, um. I feel like you guys missed the bulk a little bit.
So our task at hand here is reining these numbers back in and where we can find flexibility. It'll help us in other areas like this.
Go back to the locker rooms again, um, the staff was requesting their offices to be outside of the locker rooms.
On the outside corridor wall, right now you have to walk through the locker.
Yeah, it looks like it can't happen.
Uh, just from the price alone, that's a big driver of the increase, so our. Our idea was let's create another i, uh, path forward that keeps these in place so we can compare the two, the two numbers.
Is there any way you people can look at moving those offices? So that the staff and the students are more comfortable with their setup, any of them inside the locker room?
Moving them somewhere other than they are right now, that's what the plan was showing, so. They moved from one side of the locker rooms to the other, so that we could put a door from the hallway directly into those offices. And that requires a bulk out of the whole base, which was above and beyond the concept level. We're, we're, we're exploring every idea right now, the, the plan is to look in at. What it looks like and what it looks like cost wise to leave the rooms where they are, um. If we can't access them where they are from a different room, I think the fitness center is on the other side, I don't even know if that's doable. We're going to consider everything. This is the next one, sorry, okay, so the secure entrance, uh, this, this has grown in, in, in cost a little bit. Um, schematic design, like I, I mentioned earlier, reflects replacement of the storefront upfront. That's, that's I think one of the biggest drivers of the cost increase, those are cheap. So we're exploring an, uh, an option to leave those in place while also adding. The um, forced entry protection that we're looking for for security, um, we did through the schematic design process. Widen the vestibule a bit, uh, from the, from the concept level. And increase this, and that also increased the size of the reception S R O office as well. Uh, there were just, there were some finishes that we didn't have at concept level for the rest of the lobby, um, which, which adds to the increase. Uh, so what we're going to do, like I said, is, is come up with a plan B. Uh, leave as much of the existing building intact, like the windows and doors as we can reuse and see where we land there, that'll chop that number down significantly.
One of the biggest drivers in that vestibule decision was the fact that, um. The double door security area wasn't deep enough and that in fact, uh, typical. Teenage individual could hold one door and hold another door. Um, and thus break the security concept that it was initially designed for. So changing that vestibule was absolutely critical from that one piece. The size of the offices and the locations of the offices are things that we do need to re-engineer, but we're going to have to look at the vestibule size. And then where do we put those offices, um, and how much change in the offices are really needed or not?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Is it possible to, to change the size of the vestibule without changing, like without increasing the square footage of the offices?
Um, it is, uh, we were also being sensitive to that group's input as well. And there's, the spaces are small, um, even on the increased size, so they're, they're big enough for their function. Uh, I'm just afraid if they got smaller, they'd be on this small, too small side, but it's definitely something that's on the table to be looked at.
Cause I, I know that one of the, one of the areas that we discussed in the initial party was the fact that. Uh, the current vestibule that we have now was not wide enough, so again. I'm, I'm just confused as to why that cost factor wasn't factored in.
Where we ended up placing the interior vestibule doors is, is even wider, I, I believe, um. I, I, I don't have an answer for that right now, I, I apologize, but, um. The, we did, do you have any idea what that dimension increased to?
No, it probably doubled from six or seven feet to fourteen feet.
Okay, um, so the, the, the conceptual estimate would have not have included the windows and doors like I'd said. Uh, focusing mainly on the existing area where the doors are. Um, did the, did the vestibule getting that much wider drive the price up? As much as it did, no, not on its own, that like honestly, there's a lot of that expense in the windows and bars. If you can go on to the next one, yeah, so to, to address that, we're going to come up with a, a second plan here to reuse some of the buildings, existing building. Um, and the dust collection system, uh, what's contributing to the, the higher cost of that? Uh, this is something that's also been talked about before, so. The system we're looking at, the reduct work requires fire protection inside the ducts to protect from a spark igniting. A blowback into the building or explosion. Our closest connection point to a code approved. Water source, you can't be behind any sort of shut off valves, it has to work when it needs to work, um, is over by the main entrance. It's across the building, it's very, it's significant, we have to go through the, through the building. Um, to run new sprinkler pipe out to there, uh, that length of pipe was not accounted for at the schematic level. Um, there's a lot of ancillary construction along with that as well, you can imagine. We're taking ceilings down, we're punching through walls, we're, we're cutting our way through the building to get a pipe above the ceiling over there. Um, and then the, the screen is current was designed as a. A nice looking masonry wall, uh, which can easily be scaled back, is how we're going to address it to a. A decorative chain, a decorative fence or a chain link fence.
Is. Is that, is the dust collector going to be enclosed in the building?
It is outside the building.
You, you don't think that there's going to be a, a freezing issue with an unheated. Area with a water source that has to be continual water source?
That would be a problem, that goes outside, um, we are looking into that, that question did come up, um. Where the sprinkler head needs to be located exactly in that, I, I don't know right now, um. But yes, that would not be a good idea to run a sprinkler pipe full of water outside into an unconditioned space, that wouldn't happen. We are looking at other options, uh, like a dry systems that would. Put a dry agent on there to douse that down, it could be locally stored and, and help cut costs down as well. Would it be it, um, are there any other questions I have to open it up to the board?
Can we just review? Okay, so in the gym, you're going to evaluate the bracing. Due to the removal of the mezzanine and, and look for cost savings there. In the U P K music art area, you're revisiting the square footage of the floors to keep it under a thousand. Square feet per, which would give us what the users need. But keep the cost down from all the additional items required when we exceed a thousand feet, square feet. The secure, the secure entryway, we're going to revisit and come back to the original plan, but at least have a secondary plan. With some layout adjustments and widening the area in the doorway. So that nobody can hold them open, keeping it secure. The auditorium, I think for the most part is, is in good shape, although you're still looking at the acoustic shelf. And some variations there, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And just for, and, and the, and the desk collection since Matt also brought. And just for, and, and the, and the desk collection, since Matt also brought that up, it's. There are a bit different options that you're looking at for, um. Fire code as well as the. Outside, not necessarily using CMU wall, but potentially screening or some other material.
Other type of fencing, yeah.
Okay. And, and for the board also, we spent a fair amount of time on a variety of other, what I'll call other items. In this list, in the, and there's a whole series of other items. There's furniture, there's, there's. Printing costs, there's a whole bunch of other things that I think they're taking close look at. Um, because there's potential to remove some or all of those. Um, what I would say, and I wanna re- reiterate a couple of things that you said to Mike. I'm okay with submitting two plans to SED because. Giving one plan to SED that they can review that, that is over, over budget. Is look, and they, they can review it at this time and then later on. When we get to the point where we may have some contingency funds, as long as it's been reviewed, we can add something in. That maybe needed at that time, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And some of those items may be part of the VCS or building condition survey.
That's correct, yep.
Is there an additional cost to submitting two plans to SED?
No.
There's not.
No, and, uh. One of the, one of the costs that we talked about earlier today that is included in here that we can remove is the roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. For third party review. And I think you said earlier today that. Everybody's doing a third party review, so it's actually maybe quicker to go through the normal review and not spend the money.
The regular queue has got.
That's, you know, something, we're gonna take that out. That's thirty-five. So I know it's small, but. So that's an example, that's the example of the kind of things we discussed earlier today. So.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll continue on with the, the standard SED review. Is it scheduled for six to eight months or, or less?
Now, I just have a question. If we submit a plan A and a plan B to SED. How does that work for our timeframe then again? Is it still the six to eight months or is now? Is that you get one, you have to get both at the same time?
Which can affect the time.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, we would always recommend submitting. If you, if you think you might be able to get a better plan, we would recommend submitting it with. A scaled back plan because that gives you more options. You simply have the option. When we get further down the road, we're gonna have better and better estimates. And when we get to close to the bidding. Um, if it looks like we might be able to get something that's a better value, it'll already be approved at SED. So I would definitely do that. It's just, we have to make sure that people understand that, that we may not be able to afford the Cadillac. In the end, but we'll design it so you have the option.
Based on the meeting we had today, I, I, I walked away with enough confidence that we can get this back within the budget. Amount and not compromise the requirements that we've committed to.
I'd like to add one other comment to Mike's point, and that is. Um, we're gonna be engaged in this process and the user groups are gonna have to reengage. And we're gonna wanna reengage the user groups because if in fact, we're thinking about. Um, taking this initial plan, Plan A and resizing it and rescoping it. Their input is gonna be critical so that they understand, um, how are we shaping things? And the potentiality that if it doesn't work, we have to necessarily make some difficult decisions. So, um. It's about that focus and again, re-engaging our individuals so that everybody's involved in the, in the work moving forward.
But yes, our, our goal is we get to the end of this project, there are no surprises. Everybody knew how we got to the end and hopefully we're all happy with how it came home.
And you said you were going to look at, um, other schools for how they problem solve different things.
For the band show.
For the, I would implore you to do that with a variety of issues with our small rural schools. Who do not have massive budgets, who are pretty accustomed to not having Cadillacs. But we still have brilliant students who do creative, wonderful things and phenomenal educators. So. We still have great spaces. See what they do and bring those ideas to us, cause that's what we know we're not gonna have. State of the art everything.
Right.
But what we do wanna know is how we can deliver the best thing for the greatest value to our kids.
Yes, yeah, totally great, absolutely good point. That is what we're gonna do going through our, as we develop the design in the next two phases, yep.
Any other comments? Can you fill in some details on the scope of the boiler work? Is that one or two?
Uh, we did one, it's the emergency project, or the second one under the project, the regular project.
So how's it cost multiple times what the last one cost? If my memory is correct, we were down. You're like a half a million in last, four hundred thousand.
Boilers did go down. We're actually fifteen thousand to the positive on that number from the original budget. So that was a single six million re- the boiler.
Yeah, we just replaced one, but we're nowhere near that.
Emergency project.
So one, one thing we do have baked into some of the, into these numbers at this point in design, our. Design contingencies. It's a percentage that we add because they're still. The great unknown in front of us. We're still refining things. We're still selecting materials and equipment. We're boilers, for example. Um, although that, we might already know what we're gonna be using. Um. Um. Yeah, we're, we're gonna be taking a look at all this and, and, and trying to get back into this number.
I think that number is.
Well, that number, yeah, sorry about that. That number, that number is not correct.
I think that's not the number we saw earlier.
Okay, yeah, that number is not correct. I apologize for that. It should be fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five. Yeah.
I think there were a couple of others in there that we could talk about later, but as well. Um, any other comments? I'm bored, but I'm actually gonna ask. Everybody good? I do wanna turn it to, just because of where we are in this project, I'd like to see if there's anybody here who has any questions? Anybody in the audience? Just the, yeah.
So, I mean, I've got a few comments and I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't thinking I was gonna speak at this, but, um, sometimes we super articulate, but. A couple of things, um, I wanna mirror what Matt said. It's really disappointing having been through this time and time again to think about things like. What the mezzanine was gonna do to our gym, um, what the dust collector situation was gonna be like. The vestibule, not understanding how wide it would need to be to be appropriate ahead of time. That's really disappointing. Um, because to me, these are things that could have been headed off at the pass. But the other thing, and again, just seeing this for the first time, I just wanna say when you add up. The issues that happened between the arts, music and, and UPK, they are miniscule compared to the others. So while I'm not saying we need that big huge shell in the auditorium, we do not. We were perfectly happy with a thirty-three thousand dollar, you know, shell. So we don't need that. We're not saying we need that. What I don't wanna do is start picking apart a couple thousand here and there. And getting rid of them in those spaces for the one point whatever million that is happening other places. So I feel like. And, and I'm not saying that the gym is not important. It is super important. The locker rooms are super important as well. But I don't wanna hear from now on those spaces being talked about in the same level. As the one point whatever million spaces. It's not going to, it's not going to have that same kind of an impact. And the last thing I wanna say is that I'm not sure the UPK art and music room space is really being. Thoughtful if we are going to, um, not increase music and art for those spaces. Those are. It's critically important. And so to me, whatever can be done to expand those really needs to be done and be thoughtful and, um. And so I, I feel like I need to speak for the teachers on that, seeing what those spaces are like right now.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
Good value.
Anybody, anybody else before we close out this conversation? Okay. All right. Mike?
Thanks, everybody.
Gary, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be.
Thank you.
My thank you, but we'll be talking a lot more. Thank you.
And you can feel confident when we, we, we won't.
And welcome to stay.
Same, it's up to you, but you can feel comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so. Dr. Hunter, Mike Salatell, Stephanie Hilt, John Holt, Laura is warm for you in the budget discussion.
Terrific. This is, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh. This is the.
Something you said?
Oh, to me? I don't worry about it too much longer.
If we can keep you awake through this one, it's gonna, it's gonna go much quicker after this. Uh, no, all kidding aside, we will keep you awake for this one. Um, in that this, uh, budget for instructional and personal expenditures is exceptionally well done. Uh, so I wanna start by giving kudos to myself, to Stephanie Hilt, John Holt, and our principals. This is about thorough planning for where we are and where we want to go. It's gonna give you a picture of who's driving our programs and what are the essential programs for this year, building on into the future. That's what good budgeting is about. Uh, and we're pleased that this budget presentation is gonna show you a picture of that quality work. So you have seen our budget goals before, so there's nothing new here, but they do. Uh, focus our work and we start with those budget goals because they are what this budget plan is all about. I'm gonna do the first summary. So I'm gonna do the first summary. And I'll let Stephanie do the follow up and she'll give you more depth into the numbers. And the reason I wanna do the first summary is that you're going to see over on the. Plus minus delta column, some pretty big numbers in professional salaries, support salaries. And out of district placements. And then at the very bottom, our budget to budget growth of one point eight million dollars. This is about good budgeting at this point in time. In the past. Budgets, uh, made the decision in the past to not budget for positions both in salaries and in federal grants. That is not how most budgets are produced and we decided we were going to leave that past behind and we were going to budget. For both grants as well as, uh, professional and support salaries. So those two big numbers reflect. That double budgeting, which is part of a strong budget plan that backs up these positions, should there be changes in any type of grant money. The third inter- increase is out of district placements. Uh. There's a history in our district and in other districts. We're not unlike any other districts, other than we're trying to do it better now. There's a history of specialized programs expenses being greater than budget. It happens everywhere. Our focus this time through hard work is to try to budget and or project budget. Uh, categories for individuals who have not necessarily been placed until maybe even after the budget is a. Uh, uh, passed and adopted into the middle of May. This gives us again, best budget plan at the outset. So, uh, when you're looking at a one point eight million budget to budget, there are reasons for it. You'll understand what these, uh, budgeting decisions are. But more importantly, as we go through the rest of the budget, you're gonna understand what the instructional and staffing decisions are to drive instructional programs. Mr. Holt, you're gonna pick up, uh, our next piece, please.
So the next slide goes through the, uh, projected staffing numbers in these areas. And like Dr. Hunter said. Um, we really are, are trying to be as, uh. Clear and specific and as transparent as possible in, in, in what our budget staffing numbers were this current year. Um, and, and then again, next year. So you see in maintenance, it went from fifteen to fourteen. That was actually, uh, correcting something that we had, um, in this current year budget. Um, someone in the maintenance department was actually a substitute cleaner. They were included in that budget and they shouldn't have been. So. That minus one point O is, is not reflective of a cut. It's just reorganizing where they should be i- in, in our budget. Transportation stays the same at sixteen point O, um, superintendent, um, two point O. You do see the increase in technology, um, that's on the agenda for tonight, hiring a, a CSA, a computer services assistant to help, uh. In the technology office, um, and, and that was, uh, created this year to help offset, um, as my role changed. Um, I'm not in the technology office nearly as, as much. And, um, last year we also had a, a point six individual in that department from, from both seasons. No longer there. So, um, that's, that's in, in theory, um, helping. Support that technology office back to where we were before. Um, district operations, you see a one point O reduction there. That's the position that Mr. Carroll, um, left. Uh, um, and, and we didn't fill it in the same way we restructured what, uh, Stephanie Hill's doing, what I'm doing. And others in the district office, but you see that reduction for a total from thirty-nine point O in those, uh, uh, five areas down to thirty-eight. Um, for one point O. Um, the key additions I talked about was the computer services assistant, which is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Um, other notes in non-instructional, um, we, while we've talked about it and we're planning for EV, um, vehicles in our, in our transportation, that is not part of this budget. You know, it, it's not inclusive of this budget at all. Um, Mr. Salatell talked, um, about, uh, the cell phone policy in New York state. Um, that is, we're talking about it, we're planning for, but that is not budgetarily included in this budget. So we wanted to, to make sure that was clear moving forward.
Another big component of the budget is your employee benefits. So this is. Your health and dental insurance, on any of your secondary BICA expenses related to personnel, your retirements and. The other category, which is gonna be your workers comp, insurance, your. Um, insurance for the building, things like that. Um, a couple of key things to point out is the anticipated healthcare increase for next year is twelve point four percent. That is pretty substantial. Um, another one is the TRS, um, rate for next year is going down from ten point one one to nine point five eight. Um, and then the ERS percentage is, is actually going up from fourteen point nine to sixteen point four percent. So all of those pretty big increases are gonna drive a lot of the increase in your employee benefits.
Now we're gonna get into the instructional piece of the budget. And, uh, as you can see, pretty elementary. Enrollment projections. Let's scroll that down a little bit. Thank you, Ken. Um, we're actually going down fifteen students projected. That can change. We certainly know this year we've. Added, uh, more than we lost of students, so that, that's always a good thing. Uh, really, everything is gonna be pretty consistent with the exception of two areas. One being the additional special education teacher. Um, this is new and, and the staff felt that that's a very important piece. To support our students to the best of our ability. And, uh. As we increase in needs of students, we certainly have to look at increasing the staff's needs as well. So. The other big piece is the MTSS. We, we wanna really be able, able to support students academically, but as well as behaviorally. And having a tiered intervention model in place. Led by a, an MTSS provider will really support staff in the classroom for both an instructional. Standpoint as well as a planning standpoint and a behavior standpoint. So we're so excited about that opportunity. Next are just a list of the resources that are, are currently part of the budget as well. If you notice, a lot of those items are in year two, maybe three, some are in year one. Um, but we wanna continue to budget for those areas. Whether it's go blue, character strong, really great reading, uh, to, to make sure they're in the budget so we can su- support those programs. And, and best support staff as well in enhancing the level of performance from our students. Are you ready? We're gonna do a trial year with that and, uh, very, very important in math for us to continuously assess our students. Monitor growth. Then, uh, we'll do it. That comes with resources, well, subscriptions and then the benchmarking piece as well. Next year, we already did the assessment piece. Uh, we're gonna plan on doing the assessment piece and continue that again. Uh, local math curriculum. Local math curriculum, looking at full implementation of that. And our local reading, we're gonna be working on that as we enter into next year. That work will be ongoing. And of course, the special areas will continue as is supporting those programs as well. Middle school, high school. We, after many conversations with staff, one of the areas we noticed this year is we do have to increase our level of support at the middle school, high school. We did lose a portion of a teacher last year at that level. And that certainly with our numbers going up, we want to be able to support those students as well at a much higher level. We also last year lost a teaching assistant, so we're looking to add that back into budget, too. And everything else is going to remain pretty consistent from year four. Much like the elementary I presented, you know, we're in year three of Character Strong. Mrs. Curly, Mr. Bealy has done a wonderful job of implementing Go Blue K-12, especially to middle school, high school. And we're gonna have to gear some of our resources towards that next year because it's really taken off this year. They're doing incredible job of that writing revolution. We'll do some summer trainings, train our ELA staff as well. And we'll also do some in-house professional development. MTSS, we talked about that a little bit before. We're looking to enhance our academic intervention services. Just an area we really want to focus on, how do we get the students to advance in their performance level as well? College and career readiness, I think this is an area that Genesee has does a remarkable job at. We're going to continue to focus on career development. We really partner well with the Chamber of Commerce. You'll see a lot of those luncheon learns that's taken off this year, Mrs. Curly, really doing a great job with that. And you have the Path program, and then your field trips to go out into the business world and see different places. Just a tremendously valuable learning experience for our students. And bridge builders, we have talked about transitions in Genesee for many years, and now we really have to start to put resources to that. So how do we transition students from fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth? And to some extent, even graduates, how do we transition them up? So I'm really excited about the future for that and the good work that's going to be done to promote that because it, transitions for students can be very challenging. So the more we can support them and provide resources for that, I think it'll pay big dividends at the end. All right, advanced placement. We certainly are gonna plan on continuing to offer our 12 courses, which is just remarkable for a school our size. What's really nice about this data is we're gonna grow by seven students next year, not just in exams. Those are seven additional students are going to be enrolled in an AP. Courses are anticipated right now based on course sign-ups for next year. Altogether, 147 exams, up from 133, again, a great showing there. Number of GCC courses available, we are gonna drop one there, not to our liking, not to our desire. But they, due to accreditation at GCC, they make it very challenging at times. And I know they're constrained as well, what they can do for a teacher to get approved to be able to teach a GCC course. The superintendents, we have met with GCC to see if there's any wiggle room. Right now, we don't have the ELA teacher that'll be approved for GCC, so therefore we can't offer that as credit right now. We're hoping, I know a lot of superintendents are really struggling with this as well. Because there is a big push for college readiness in high school to get students on that path and track much earlier than just their freshman year in college. So we're hoping to make some movement there. But right now, we have to plan accordingly and plan on only 12 GCC courses. Career and tech, we're gonna be going up a little bit there, 20 students at 29, 27 to 31. And again, this is just remarkable, and I applaud Bozies for the great work. And we have students coming out that are well-prepared to join a workforce or whatever college they want to go to, whether it's two-year route, four-year route. Our students really find their learning experiences at Bozies to be very beneficial, meaningful, productive, so.
It's a good balance, right there. CTE and AP.
Great picture.
Yep, and like you said, Bozies is just doing phenomenal, phenomenal work.
And again, this is that college and career readiness, that's what you hear about a lot, and that's exactly what that demonstrates there. All right.
In special education, there's three different components or phases or stages of special education budget. First, there is the out of district stage that we look at. And we are looking at the potential of out of district placements growing for students. And we have, and we put in numbers to hold once those students gets placed in order to provide the resources necessary for the instructional support those young people will need outside of district. Our Bozies numbers will remain consistent, and that number rolls over in our budget. The second tier of special education services deal with what we might call as in-school supplemental support, IEP-driven services. We will be looking at a speech program that this year services 57 students, and we're projecting an increase of about three more students to be served, anywhere from 60 to 63. And you will see right through pretty consistent services in OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, pretty consistent, maybe a change of one or two students, music therapy, pretty consistent. We will continue our contract to provide this necessary IEP program and support. We have two students on visual therapy. They will be retained in our programs, and we will continue with a contract as well as mobility and CPSC services. CPSC services, we're looking at a potential of 31 students and their service through our connections with Livingston County. And then our final component of specialized budgeting and planning for instruction is within our own programs here on the Genesee campus. And when we take a look at elementary special classes, we have about 14 students this year, and we're projecting an increase anywhere of about three to seven students. Elementary consultant teacher services, we're at 30. Again, we're looking at a potential increase, and we need to service those students right here on campus. Our middle school special class, it's pretty consistent as we're taking a look at those individual students and the way they're being serviced. And finally, our middle school consultant teacher program is serviced by 3.0 teachers. And our high school special class, high school consultant teachers are serviced by a group of 4.0 services. So we have a total of 3.0 elementary special class teachers, a total of 5.0 elementary consultant teachers, middle school special class, about half an FTE, middle school consultant teachers, three individuals, and high school special class and consultant teachers at 4.0. In order to provide services this year, we are using 0.6 or three duly dual-certified individuals to support part of their instructional load with special education case learned. And that's why, as Mike pointed out, we're looking at key additions of a 1.0 special ed teacher and a 1.0 special ed teaching assistant.
This is just another summary of all of the things we talked about. Again, pointing out professional salaries increased 560,000, support salaries, the 327,000, and then your employee benefits, the 686,000, which are the three key areas that are increasing to get to that 1.8 million dollar increase. Just some key dates. The next presentation's April 7th will be the first draft budget. April 21st will be the final budget. And then we also have petitions and budget candidates that are due on April 21st. On April 22nd, we'll approve the Bozies budget. May 13th is the public budget hearing, and then May 20th is the budget vote. Any questions?
Questions at this point, or?
I just, I just want to thank you guys for the work in doing that. That is the most important part of the budget because it's what we do. Thank you.
Well, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Do you want to have a conversation on text?
Yes, so instead of a superintendent report, I want to just briefly set the stage for the board to ask questions and drill down into providing us a direction on where we want to go with the tax cap and tax levy. It's an important reminder for board and for community that the levy is about 48% of our total funding pool. We are dependent on our levy. Our New York State aid is impacted by some of the high wealth areas. So we know we need to use our levy and use our levy wisely in order to provide close to 50% of the resources that we are using to build our instructional plan. Last year, our maximum tax cap was at 3.8%. And over the last five years, if we were doing an average increase, we had an average increase around 2.1% of our tax, the tax cap levy. So those are the starting points. I also want to mention that when you talk about the max tax cap, you're talking about a formula developed by New York State that requires a variety of different measures and takes into a variety of considerations. When we look at the max tax cap, the audit committee shared with Stephanie Hilt some ideas about how to bond or ban some existing short-term debt. And by her putting together a plan to better manage short-term debt, she was able to provide us with a starting point of moving our tax cap, max cap, from about 4.8% down to 3.2%. So with good planning, we've already reduced what the potential expenditure on the community might, might consider to be. But that's the max cap, that's not where a board needs to land, it's the starting point for the work. Any other pieces that I should be adding to that? Okay, so you have the chart in front of you. You see the max cap, let's say, at 3.2%. That would be a levy that would bring in about 12.9 million dollars. Last year, we brought in about 12.5 million dollars. And then you see the gradations moving down from 3.2 to a 0% increase. The key for us is for you to find a position that is fiscally, politically, and educationally responsible. And as you have this conversation and you ask us about moving those numbers, we want to make sure that we answer those three components, educational, fiscal, and political responsibility as we make this determination. We won't vote on this tax cap until sometime in the April. But that being said, this is an absolutely critical decision for us at this point in time for us to move forward and present you with the first draft, first draft budget. That's our overview. Thoughts or questions about where 3.2 is and where you're thinking our district needs to consider?
Well, I mean, if you just take the two numbers that you mentioned, the top max, 3.2% and the average, which has been, I think you said 2.1?
Yeah.
It's about 145,000 difference? In terms of levy?
Yeah.
So I mean, the question then becomes, depending on where you are in that scale, if we just use 2.4 as the average. What, what do we lose? What do we give up? What does, what's the impact? And forget about political, education and fiscal. And I don't forget, I don't know the answer of this.
Yeah, so educationally. It's a rhetorical question, but educationally, we know that there's going to be some difficult decisions that need to be made. We know that this budget, the way it's planned, is going to need to be analyzed and that the revenue sources need to be at a point that is maximum from your understanding in order to minimize any of the difficult decisions that we need to make. That being said, regardless of where you land or we land, there's going to be some difficult decisions.
Have you started those within finance? I suspect you're getting close to.
Yeah, we, I think we. That landed.
Pick up on that, or Matt?
Nah, do you want to, do you want to say now, or do you want?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, we don't have to decide now. I think we, I guess I'd say we're leaning towards just under three percent.
That's looking at all programmatic and other related challenges.
So for planning purposes, the administrative team and myself, we're gonna be focusing on around the 2.9, two, two point, two point, around the 2.9% levy. And then obviously, as a board, you're gonna give us a final determination. But for our planning purposes, that's what we're gonna use moving forward. Great. Thank you.
Any other? Anybody want to sign in? All right, I guess we're at committee reports. In finance?
Yes, we, we met just prior to this meeting, and we've obviously already hit on some of the materials we covered. We did spend a fair bit of time talking about the tax cap numbers. Stephanie also presented us with a collateral report, which just basically summarizes where our money is parked and how it's collateralized. That was, that was very handy to look at. We looked at a revenue report through February, for January, February, and also appropriations reports, or report. I think we could say we're in an okay spot now, but maybe too soon to tell. You know, another month or two will get us a better idea where we're gonna end up the year. As far as appropriations, revenues are all on track. And that, that really was most of what we covered.
Great, thank you. I know it's a busy time for finance and audit committee, so thank you all. Thank you. Kevin, anything on policy?
Yeah, we're gonna get geared back up again here shortly. We have certain policies that we need to address. Partly, I'm running the new superintendent as well, our cell phone policy that's gonna be, need to be in place before we start school next fall. So we've got some work ahead of us.
Okay. All right, looking forward to that. Mike, anything on GCEF?
Yes, once again, greatly appreciate us having that avenue to go to. We have a number of teachers that apply for some grants to give our students a variety of very valuable learning experiences coming up in the near future.
A variety of uh very valuable learning experiences coming up in the near future. Also equally important, this is a time of year we have to get in all of our payments to our travel agencies. And that economic hardship fund has been. A sacred issue, so. Once again, GCF, we can't thank them enough for all that they do to support our teachers. But most importantly, our students as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, with that, we're gonna turn to personnel. Devin, with the exception of eight-point-one-three. Other personnel, I'd like to ask for motion of consent. Both eight-point-zero-two to eight-point-one-two. And then from eight-point-one-four to eight-point-nine-six.
Second.
So in this list, um. I guess. I, uh. My wife's here, so she'll probably yell at me for saying this. We went on vacation. Maybe I shouldn't go on vacation anymore because I come back and I see. Six retirements. Um, all. Bittersweet in so many regards, and it's hard to, hard to say that, but. Retirement for Amy Perez. Allison Chandler. John Bear. Renee DeYoung. Karen Robinson. Heather Malk. Just, uh. I don't know if I could. I don't know if my math is good enough to add up the years of service. That, that list included, we spend the, the amount of. Oh, gosh, the, the, I could go on all night and say all the good things that that group have done. Allison, you're here and I'll speak to you on behalf. I did send you a note, but uh. It's, it's bittersweet. I, I respect everybody who wants to retire. I. I, you know, in this, in this context, it's, it's a year ahead of time, I know, but. Uh, from that standpoint, we certainly will and we'll miss you all. It's hard to replace. Um. The, the expertise, the service. The quality that you bring.
So I'm, I'm gonna echo that uh for each of these individuals. Uh, Amy Perez, Allison Chandler, John Bear, Renee DeYoung, uh Karen Robinson. Uh, the expertise and the commitment to children is exceptional, and we can enjoy that. For one more year, we're gonna miss it after that. So, thank you for your.
And I would echo that as well. The learning that takes place in their classrooms is certainly highly commendable. But all these individuals also do so much more for our school and students. Outside the classroom.
Yep.
Community. So that what they bring. And have brought to the table for many, many years. Will be sorely missed, just. Congratulations, well deserved, and uh. GCS will have to pick up from where a lot of you have done so much, and I'm sure that'll happen, but. Done a remarkable job, all of them.
Yeah, I would just like to just. Thank, thank them all for. Their, their level of service and dedication to a truly noble profession. Um. One can't quantify. The, the value of a teacher and the number of lives touched. So appreciate everybody's service and. Uh, like, like I said, it is bittersweet, but. Well deserved.
Well said.
Thank you so much, Ray. You've done for us, and hopefully you'll come back and sell. Taylor looking for a teaching job.
There we go. There we go.
Spoken by a woman. All right, with that. I have to ask for the vote.
Yep.
So. Comments made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As much as we would like to reject some, we can.
Right.
All right. Hearing none, so we'll, thank you. Under new business. My dash for motion of consent. For item is nine-point-zero-two through nine-point-zero-five. Okay. All right. Any questions on any of these, um? In business, eh? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So. Under the business office. My task for motion of consent from ten-point-zero-two. Through ten-point-zero-six. Second. Any questions for? Anybody on these items?
Um, so when I was looking at the documents, uh, ten-point-o-two, I didn't have an attachment. Um, when I looked at it. If I could just get that at some point. Um, and then it was really nice to see a picture of the obsolete item. That was just really helpful to me, but uh.
It was nice.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So. Under section eleven, at this point in time, I ask for motion of consent to enter into executive session. Bottom recommendation of the interim superintendent entering into executive session to discuss personal matter and conduct our discussion. Personnel matter and.
Second.
All right, all in favor to enter executive session?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? So. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you online. Anybody online?
Yeah.